All right, good evening. I'm gonna call this September 5th, 2023 work session to order. I ask for roll call, please.
Dr. Campley?
Here.
Mr. Dorr?
Here.
Mrs. Evans Brockett?
Here.
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Dr. Kohler?
Here.
Mrs. Mayers? Mr. Saylor?
Here.
Ms. White?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move on with the meeting, I'm just gonna have a quick presentation by my Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. Good evening to our school board members, administration, and also community members. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to our school board and PV community Ms. Kelsey Gartner as our recommended candidate for the Director of Food and Nutrition Services position. Kelsey has joined us this evening, so thank you for coming tonight. Ms. Gartner participated in an extensive hiring process. We had over 26 highly qualified candidates interview, or I'm sorry, apply for this position. And Ms. Kelsey Gartner went through an extensive process, four rounds of interviews, and was selected as the recommended candidate for this position. She's a Pennsylvania licensed dietitian who earned her Bachelor of Science degree in nutrition and dietetics from Delaware University and her Master's degree in leadership development from Penn State University. She comes to PV with a combination of experience from both public school and private industry, one of the areas that was very appealing to our committee members. Ms. Gartner has 10 years' experience working in the Food Services Department at Great Valley School District, where she served as a food service manager as well as a registered dietitian. Ms. Gartner also most recently served one year with Advantage Waypoint, where she served as a K-12 segment specialist, supporting school districts, distributors, and manufacturers in the food service area. The combination of her experience from both the public education and private industry make Ms. Gartner a strong candidate for the position, and we are excited for the opportunity to have her serve our community. I'd like to thank the overwhelming amount of community members that have come out to support her candidacy for this evening and appreciate as we move forward this evening in recommending her for approval for this position. So, thank you.
And thank you, Kelsey, for joining us tonight.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. There's a second. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We'll move on to comments on any topic. Just a reminder, for those coming up to speak, you'll have three minutes. State your first and last name and what township or borough you're from. We'll start with the people that were on the list. Paul DeLeo.
Good evening. Paul DeLo, I live in the Skippack Township. Three kids that have gone through PV, two just graduated last year. I have a daughter that's a junior right now. First off, I wanted to thank the board and all the administrators here. I know the last couple of years have been extremely hard with a number of difficult topics that we've had to address. And although I haven't always agreed with everything that the board has done or how things have been approached, I've always appreciated the fact that there's time for discussion. We bring it together as a community. We come together as a community to have these discussions. As I'm sure many of you know, there was some posts earlier this week on Facebook that have raised another topic. The post was around bathroom rules and regulations and policies within the bathrooms in the school district. And what I was wondering and what I was hoping to get out of tonight, or at least post for a future meeting, was is there a current policy in place around rules and regulations for gender in the bathrooms? Was this policy ever discussed or voted on? And was it ever communicated to the parents? It really caught me, and I know a number of folks off-guard when we saw these posts out there with messages that went out from some of the administrators to individuals in the community. And would really just like some additional background on it, see what the policy is currently, and if there's an opportunity to discuss this policy in the right setting. Thank you.
Lori DeLo? That's fine. Rich Westlett?
I want to first start by saying I'm looking forward to November, when hopefully everybody stands for the Pledge of Allegiance. I have a son in 10th grade. I also was privy to the email that went out. And also, I'm looking for clarification.
Can you just give your township real quick?
Oh, Skippack Township.
Thank you.
Legally, clear clarification on the school's stance on bathroom use, gender, and what have you. It was quite a disturbing email, because that was not, certainly I was not aware of that policy. So, I'm hoping that this meeting serves to clarify that, mostly from a legal perspective. Thank you.
Aspen Bradley?
Hi, my name is Aspen Bradley, and I live in Skippack Township. It's good to see some of you guys. My parents, or not my parents, parents and guardians took to social media this holiday weekend to air their worries about transgender students. The concern is of transgender students using the restroom resulting in harassment of a cisgender student. This is a claim that has no evidence, which has been confirmed by spokespeople of the Transgender Law Center, the Human Rights Campaign, and the American Civil Liberties Union. This is scapegoating a minority rather than addressing the bigger issue, which is not the answer. Opposite to a baseless claim, there are studies of the converse being true. With the oppression of bathroom rights comes more harassment of transgender students. One in two transgender individuals is sexually assaulted in their lives. A 2019 Harvard study finds that researchers looked at data from a survey of nearly 3,700 US teens aged 13 to 17. The study found that 36% of transgender or gender non-binary students with restricted bathroom or locker room access reported being sexually assaulted in the last 12 months. According to a May 6, 2019 CNN article, of all students surveyed, one out of every four or 25.9% reported being a victim of sexual assault in the past year. In an NCAA VP report on the hate violence, 50% of people who died in violent hate crimes against LGBT people were transgendered women. Now, I understand that there is a fear of assault, and that isn't to be diminished. But you're pointing figures at the wrong issue, children who are not a problem for existing. The astounding conclusion from studies is best said from the National Institute of Health. Be aware that sexual assault is highly prevalent in transgendered and non-binary youth, and that restrictive school restroom slash locker room policies may be associated with that risk. Who do you plan on helping with restricting bathroom access for trans students? It certainly isn't the girls in the school, because the issue of sexual harassment has been prevalent in schools surveyed back since 1916/8 in the Department of Education's Civil Rights Data Collection, also known as the CRDC. The AAUW reports that sexual harassment is widespread in middle school and high schools. Young &amp; Colleagues 2008 found that 40 to 50% of students have experienced some form of sexual harassment in a single school year. With longer periods of time examined, the results of sexual harassment are understandably higher. In AAWU's, in AAWU's, sorry, previous research, more than 80% of students reported that they have experienced sexual harassment at least once in the school career. Now, notice that this long-term, 76-page study, which I have printed out if anyone wants to read, never mentions anything about transgender perpetrators. Do you wonder why? Because it does not happen. I will end this with one final thought, a quote. "One's body is inviolable, subject to one's own will alone."
Thank you. Samuel Lucas Ekin?
Hello. I would like to first say thank you for allowing me to speak here, but also thanking all of the LGBTQ+ people that have come before me within our history that have allowed me to, this opportunity to speak freely.
Sam, can you just state your name and just state that you're a student?
Oh, yeah. My name is Samuel Lucas Eskin. I am a sophomore that goes here to PV High School. I would also like to thank all of the queer people and allies that helped pass the original laws against discrimination towards trans people using public restrooms in 2018. Queer people's rights are constantly being questioned, especially LGBT youth. All the recent laws against queer people are targeting youth within the LGBTQ+ community due to our lack of ability to fight for our rights in public spaces. In regards to the questioning of trans rights and trans people using the restrooms, it's absurd, to say the least. In the email sent out, there was no factual evidence saying that the other person in the restroom was trans or a man in any way. All that email sounded like, to me, was hearsay. None of what was mentioned in that email is hard, factual, undeniable evidence. And even if it had been, there's nothing mentioned that this other individual had done anything to make it seem as though they were a threat. Queer people actually avoid using public restrooms due to the high risk of hate crime and sexual assault. I, in fact, have actually been hate-crimed in a public restroom before, and I was harassed by a group of people during middle school. And after asking many of my queer friends and family, all of them said that they avoid or limit their usage of public restrooms. I would even do sports, as I love being active, but I am constantly worried about the bullying and harassment that would come with it. I truly believe schools should no longer have public restrooms, limiting one person at a time because of the fact that a lot of times sexual assault does occur, and also it could help limit the amount of vaping that happens in school and our ability to monitor it. If this policy is passed, you are not failing only me or the other gay and trans people in the school, but just in general, the students that attend our school. Please do not fail us once more.
Tim Jagger?
Hello, Tim Jagger, Lower Frederick Township. Good evening, board. So, I am the one that posted that post. It was brought to my attention by my daughter. She was in the bathroom, had a concern about somebody that looked like a male that came in there. You're correct. There's no fact that it was a definite male. We don't know.
Just so you know, everything goes this way.
Okay. We are unsure if it was a definite male or if it was a transgender. The fact of the matter is, my daughter will go to school and not use a restroom here now. She is too upset and emotionally disturbed to walk into a restroom. So, when she reported this, I reached out, and the response I received was that, what you saw on the post. And now, I believe the solution that my children or anybody else's children that are not comfortable using the bathroom with someone of the opposite biological gender in it should find and use a single-stall bathroom. That's absurd, that my daughter and anybody else's daughter, son, should have to go and do that. There is zero reason for someone with male genitalia to be in the girls' facilities, the same as there is zero reason someone with female genitalia should be in the boys' facilities. It's a simple matter of biology, safety, personal space. I'm asking the board to initiate a policy similar to other districts like Pen Ridge, where it's simply boys in the boys' room, girls in the girls' room. If you choose to identify as something other than your biological anatomy, then there are single-use bathrooms available. If you're not comfortable in your biological bathroom, but there is no reason others should be afraid to use their biological bathroom so somebody else can pretend they are biologically something that they are physically not. I would also like to point out that some of these people that are fighting for the rights for those with gender identity issues and are worried about the bullying, harassment, and shaming of that community, some of those very people reached out to me, tried to bully me, tried to shame me, and my wife, into taking my post down. So, these are the people we're dealing with, people that'll bully and harass you to try and get their way. Thank you.
Luke Pepper? Luke Pepper?
Luke Pepper, Perkyma Township. I'm a frequent flyer here, but tonight I was not going to speak, but I think I want to say some things. Legally, I don't know what Mr. Jagger's talking about, because the policy he's advocating is based on a false premise that transgender students or queer students are more likely to commit some sort of predatory act, such as rape or sexual assault. It's simply not true. They're human beings. We know this from empirical evidence that shows that there is no higher rate of transgender rape of females in the bathroom versus any other type of rape. There are laws against all of this. The fact that you don't see transgender and queer people as human beings is the problem. Not one of them that I have encountered, positively or negatively in my life, have ever been a predator or a racist. The idea that we're treating children as potential predators because they have a mental health disorder or they're transgender, or both, is simply unacceptable for a school, a public school district. We need to spend our time on figuring out how those people feel more included. And until and when someone actually comes up with some true story that happened where a child was assaulted in the bathroom or something happened, I think we need to worry about the bullying, and this is just another form of bullying. Now, I don't know Mr. Jagger's motivations, whether or not he wants to be a social media hero, but he will not do it in the back of some of my clients. He will not do it on the back of some of my friends.
Order. We're not supposed to talk to other people or mention their name. We're supposed to, everything addressed towards the chair, sir.
Okay. I don't know what the gentleman's motivation is, and I don't know if there's some other, but I don't care. What we need to do is focus on situations that I've been privy to, where little girls are getting, who have short hair and wear sporty clothes, are getting, "You're a tranny, 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 tranny. You have a dick," was the exact quote. Or, even better, is when people are writing underneath pictures of transgender students, disgusting, vile, they shouldn't be here, they shouldn't be in this school. And unless anyone forget, "separatist equal" is not the law of the land. 1954 made sure of that. And we have different ways to accommodate this. This is discrimination on its face. These people don't deserve it as human beings, especially as students. They're entitled to an education free and without this sort of abuse and bullying. And you can continue to do it. No religion justifies it, no point of view justifies it, and certainly the facts on the ground don't justify it. Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak? Does anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir. First name, last name, township, borough?
Mike Sheridan. I live in Skippack Township. You know, and it's... The subject is this narrow. The issue is this wide. We're in the middle. I don't know how many years. Is it 10 years, 15 years, 20 years? Our nation is in a setting where there is a persistent concerted effort to deconstruct, to deconstruct every institution in our society, every norm in our society. This is just an ugly example of that. Who would have thought? Who would have thought that you needed a board policy to say, "Biological boys go in the boys' restroom, biological females go in the girls' restroom"? Who would have thought that? And yet, in this upside-down, crazy society that we now live in, it's gotta be a board policy. Are you gonna need a board policy about urinating in the hallways? You would say, "No, because that's a norm." That's a norm, of course. Would you need a board policy that you can't strip off your clothes and walk up and down the hallway? Of course you wouldn't. Would you need a board policy, "The boys go to the boys' room and the girls go to the girls' room"? Apparently, you do. But my real question is, how did this happen? If you don't have a board policy, who is it that took it upon themselves? Well, I guess, I can't say to implement a policy, because there is no policy. Who took it upon themselves to implement this action? Was it the principal of the high school? If it was, and I don't know if it was, if it was, there ought to be an investigation to find out, and who else was involved in it, going up the chain, going down the chain? After you do your investigation, if it discloses that it was a unilateral action of the principal of the high school that did this, you ought to consider a motion to suspend the principal pending dismissal. Because who would take that upon themselves? Who would have such poor judgment to lead the school in the beginning of the school year, just one thought, away from academics?
Thank you very much.
Away from achievement?
Very much.
And into the toilet?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, you can't speak again till after the, at the end of the meeting.
Hi, I'm Tara Chilla. I live in the Skippack Township. I have two boys. One is in middle school and one is in high school. I just found out about this last night and completely fired up. They're innocent boys. My one is 12 years old. I told him, he goes, "Mom, I'm never going to the bathroom again." He does not want to go into a bathroom with anyone other than a boy. I mean, they're already uncomfortable going in with boys. They have to learn how to use the urinal. There's boys 12 years old that don't want to go in a urinal because they're standing next to someone. They're innocent children that just want to go to the bathroom comfortably. They don't want to look over and see, "There's a boy and there's a girl changing a tampon." Or the vice versa. You don't know what you're seeing when you walk into these bathrooms. Kids are uncomfortable. They're just little children. That's what I'm worried about. I would like to know also from the board what we can do to stop this. And the numbers. How many kids are there that want to go in? You know, a boy that identifies as a girl that's gonna go in the girls' room? What are the numbers? What can we do to stop this? How can we help them, but also keep our kids safe and comfortable? It's not just about safety. It's also about these kids trying to grow up and feel comfortable in their own skin. There's puberty. They're already worried about what they're gonna wear to school. Now, they gotta worry about who's in the bathroom with them? Just let them be children. That's all I'm asking.
Shawna, after her.
Hi, I'm Terry Mulville, Collegeville Borough. I think this proposed policy, the social media posts that I saw over the weekend, quite frankly, are just fueling the fire of discrimination against the kids that are in the LGBTQ community. These kids are already at high risk, and I want safety for my kids, just like anybody else. I think that's the larger issue here, that this, these posts and this supposed policy or lack of policy is forgetting about. There are much bigger problems in these bathrooms than whether a boy with a penis walks into a girl's room because they are a transgender female. You have drug abuse. You have drug overdoses. You have bullying. You have fights. You have crime going on in the bathrooms. All of us, all of our kids, could be exposed to fentanyl or drug residues because they're doing drugs in the bathrooms. And nobody's talking about that. You're worried because there's a penis in the girls' room. I am a parent of two teenagers. I have a teenage cis daughter, and I have a teenage transgender son. My son is here tonight. He is not gonna go into a bathroom and rape anybody's son or daughter. He just needs to go to the bathroom. He just needs to pee. And every single day, he comes to school with a target on his back, worried if he's gonna get bullied, attacked, beat up. And every time he has to go to the bathroom, he has to decide, "Do I go to class late so I can use the single-stall bathroom?" Or do I make a choice and see which bathroom, either the girls' or the boys' bathroom, is gonna be of less danger to me? Look at the percentage. What are the numbers? How many kids in the school district are trans? And this policy is discriminating against that small number. So, there's a bunch of people that are afraid that might be one person walks into a bathroom, and they're uncomfortable. But these kids are bullied ruthlessly, daily, and this school district is just fueling it with this, you know, shroud of a safety policy that you're trying to disguise this behind, and it's quite frankly crap. Because I want my child, both my kids, my daughter and my son, to come to school and feel safe and be able to go to the damn bathroom, for God's sake. It's a basic human need, just like safety for all of us. I want all of our kids to be safe. But you guys, you know, this conversation among the school district, among the parents, is just ridiculous. It's just discriminatory. You're fueling the fire. The bullying is happening, and it's going on and on. Look what happened at the transgender LGBTQ walkout last year. Look at the kid that got beat up at the bus drop-off last year, the last day of school, because they were trans. Yeah, that's the problem.
Anyone want to speak? Sure. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Tara McDonald. I'm from Skippack Township. So, I attended PV for about 11 years, and in my senior year, I moved to a different school because I was bullied all throughout my school experience. For anybody who does not know, I am transgender. And in 5th grade, I didn't know anything about the LGBTQ community or anything like that, but in 5th grade, since I acted more feminine than what people thought, I was called slurs, like gay wad and other things. I was threatened to get beaten up all through middle school. I had a kid who came on my street and egged my house, because I hadn't even came out yet, but this was just, they assumed it, and they had a stereotype, and they hated me for it. When I got to high school, things got a teeny bit better because everybody was so focused on, you know, school and extracurriculars. But my sophomore year of high school, I came out as transgender. And for that first, I'd say, year and a half up until COVID, I used the nurse's bathroom, because I wasn't comfortable going to the public bathroom. So, that's what was right for me at the moment. And even when I did that, I was still taunted in the hallway, called names. People called me slurs. I was threatened to get beaten up. There is even a social media post that was made about me of someone filming me in the hallway, walking to my class perfectly. I was fine. I was minding my own business. hallway, walking to my class perfectly, I was fine, I was minding my own business, and it was shared around, and, you know, I went to the school about it, they, you know, couldn't figure out who it was, and my car was even vandalized, a couple kids walked behind my car one day and they banged the back glass of my window and cracked part of it near where the emblem is. But the reason why I bring this up is because I moved out of the school because of that bullying. I was incredibly depressed, incredibly anxious, I was very suicidal and attempted many different times because I hated my life and I felt isolated, and I thought I was alone and that I could never find happiness. But when I moved to my new school, and I thank my parents every single day because they are the most supportive people I've ever met in my entire life, they've gotten me hormones and helped me medically transition. When I moved to that new school, I was not met with bullying, I was seen as a woman, seen as who I am, and I was able to use the bathroom that I chose, and I never got any issue from it. The typical American spends a minute to two minutes in the bathroom. I know me, for an example, I don't even poop in public bathrooms. I go in there, I pee, I do my business, I wash my hands, dry my hands if, you know, there's paper towels, and I get out. That's what most people do in the bathrooms. And I think, you know, I understand some people's concerns, but I think what we need to do is we need to further the education on this, because I think people have a skewed view of what the LGBTQ community is. I think people have a skewed view of what the trans community is, and I think that needs to be changed. And I'm not asking you to agree with me 100%, I'm asking for respect. Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak? Yeah? Over here and then over there.
Janice Sheridan, Skippack Township. These are not my words, this was a comment to the post that was posted on Facebook, and I thought, "Wow, this woman really hit it." Well, if she is a woman, it was anonymously posted. I did reach out and ask if I could read it at the meeting, and she, he said yes. "I think the problem with the bathrooms is that certain people don't want to admit that there are teenagers out there looking to abuse a coed bathroom policy. And since PV wants to like it, like it would never happen, what happens when it does happen? Will parents be notified? They can't even control fistfights in halls, vaping, drugs, and yes, sex already happening in the bathrooms. Students have left PV because they were sexually harassed. This seems to only make sense to the parents in the district who are not looking at it from a political angle or as a gender identity politics. Women have fought long and hard to not have men in their spaces. If you think this fight is about your LGBT community, you are far mistaken. This is about abolishing women's rights in the name and for the sake of yours. You want gender-neutral bathrooms, then fight for them, but do not take away from us to gain for yourself. My input is, I did some research, the University of Toronto had to change its gender-neutral bathrooms back to bathrooms designated biological sex after two separate voyeuristic incidents in one week. Permitting transgender males to use female restrooms is an intentional violation of children's fundamental right to bodily privacy contrary to constitutional and statutory principles. Using an excuse that transgender would be stigmatized or, as someone said, forced to endure the stigmatizing and humiliating walk of shame, I guess, to another bathroom? The shame is on you. Girls walk their walks to the girls' room, boys walk their walks to the boys' room, you can walk, the transgenders can walk their walk to the transgender rooms. It's really that simple. It's not an issue of anti-anything, anti-gay, anti... It is not. It is a personal privacy issue for young girls and young boys."
Hello, I'm Max, and I'm a junior here. I'd like to share my thoughts on the bathroom policy, of course. People say they're scared when they see a trans person somewhere that they don't deem them to be. I'm 2.5 times more likely to face violence. 29% of questions transgender students admit to being threatened or hurt with a weapon on school property. There's also a proven link between LGBTQ suicide and homicide rates and a political environment in which states are debating issues regarding LGBTQ groups. You think you're helping, all you're doing is making a breeding ground for hate. Your schools have a zero tolerance for bullying, and you can hide behind the fancy words of whatever policy you put in place, but you're bullying trans kids. Whether this policy is approved or not, I will not be following it, and if they tell me that they're scared, I'll tell them I'm scared too.
Hi, my name is Erin Minnery, I'm from the Perqimen Township. So actually, I may not look like it, I know there's a stereotype for, you know, people with kind of autism, cousins of autism. People of the LGBTQ, you know, whatever you have it, they're not the only ones being bullied. I'm not saying like, I mean, actually, I am saying, I've been bullied like my whole kinda school career, since like fifth grade, just for things like, sorry, it's making me emotional, but I've been bullied for having suicidal thoughts, depression, you know, it's just because you are part of a different community, you're not the only ones being bullied. I've tried to ignore it, I mean, I've gotten really good at it, and I feel like violence is not, it's, I'm having trouble saying this, but violence isn't just against people of the LGBTQ community, it's against all people of all communities. So I feel like complaining about it is not really gonna do anything, you have to actually do something in order to, like, get rid of it. I mean, things like, I believe that racism, like, just, not really sexism, but it's, like, I mean, that is one, too, but like, just hate toward everyone of different races, like, you know, different sexual orientations, different, like, genders, it's always gonna be around. So I feel like we all have to do something in order to fix it. I don't know where I'm going with this, but, I mean, I'm just trying to put my thoughts out, so.
Shona McGee, Skippack Township. I'm sure you all know me by now, I'm Aspen's mom. I'd like to touch on something that happened over the weekend with this Facebook nonsense that's going on. A member from, I'm sorry, PV4Five Facebook page took my child's Facebook post.
You mean PV4ValuableEducation, not PV5.
Let's call a spade a spade, Jason.
I wanted to clarify the social media page, so you don't...
Okay, that's the social media page. Someone from that page took my child's Facebook post, "child," let me repeat, "child," and blasted their name, what school they went to, on social media. You wanna talk about keeping our children safe? Why don't we start there? Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment? Who hasn't already commented? Yeah?
Hi, I'm Kelly Blouth Beard from Trapp, and it seems like, so we've already established how research and facts show that transgender people pose no risk to others in bathrooms or otherwise in the regards that are being proposed, and the reality is that LGBTQ people and community are at a risk of being harmed by others, in fact. But my point is, it's not the job of a marginalized community to give up their dignity and self, sense of self, in order to make room for the negative feelings and ignorance of others. If a kid is uncomfortable, they need to learn and work on themselves. You need to grow, and the parents need to do that along with their child if they are feeling uncomfortable. If you have negative feelings towards a group, it is your job to do the work, talk to pros in the field, talk to those in the group, and work on your feelings. It is not another's job to make you comfortable. You don't make policy to take away the rights of others so you feel comfortable, you make policy to help, support, and grow healthy community. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment? Yes, yes. After, you'll go next. No, go, go, go.
Hello, my name's Aislinn Pepper, I am a junior here, I live in Perqimen Township. I want to start out by saying that I never really wanted to talk, I am terrified right now. However, I have friends here tonight that I really want to defend, because they're putting their hearts out, and I just want to make sure that everyone here knows that. I'm a cis woman, I have never once been afraid of being sexually assaulted in the bathroom. Like, these people are my friends, once again, like, I know them, and I never want anyone to feel scared in the school, and I never want anyone to be alone or hurt. No matter what minority you are, you should never feel alone in a school district. You should feel like you have a community and you should feel safe in every single part of this school. I am very disappointed in what is happening, because I want to be proud of this school, and I've given my all, whether it be grades, extracurriculars, I've given it all to this school. I hear about drugs and overdoses, like, for kids in all grades, and I don't want to hear that, because like, I want everyone in this school to be proud of graduating, be able to get to graduation. And I don't know if I can be proud of a school and a school district that can't even handle, like, drugs in a bathroom, or having bullying just with people walking down the halls. Thank you.
My name is Raylan Campley, I'm a junior here. I just want to say, why are the only people that are supposed to be comfortable the cis students? I've heard arguments that say, "Oh, my daughter or my son isn't comfortable." But what about the trans students that are going into these bathrooms who are also uncomfortable? Why, if your cis child should just be able to go into a bathroom and not have to walk to a separate bathroom, why should a trans child have to do that? Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Mr. Kenworthy, Ms. Tremba, floor is yours.
Good evening. Obviously, since we last met, the most notable event to report on for students is the start of school. Students are excited to get back into the swing of things between classes, extracurriculars, sports, et cetera, and with that, a few exciting things are to come.
Yeah, so picture days are coming for all levels. I know in the high school, Thursday are for underclassmen and Friday are for juniors. Meet the Teacher Nights in the coming weeks, high school is September 7th, middle school is September 14th, and the elementary schools are September 21st.
And our final announcement is that fall sports are well underway, we're proud of all our athletes, and we would like to take this time to encourage members of the community to attend the Vikings Unite football game on September 15th, in order to encourage and recognize the diversity and inclusivity that we have here at PV. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I have two president's reports to give, I'm gonna give my traditional president's report, I'll get to that too, Kim. Yeah. I got my traditional president's report that I wanted to give that I had thought up today, and then I want to talk a little bit about what we just heard, but first, I just wanted to clarify that the Unite date has been rescheduled from September 15th to...
October 27.
October 27.
And that is on our website, and it will go out in newsletters this week, so I appreciate you bringing that event up, it's a very special event for our community. We did change the date because it conflicted with a holiday, so thank you.
So the president's report I wanted to give today was that I attended the football game on Friday at another school district, and it's not my job as a board member of one school district to criticize another school district, so I'm not gonna do that. What I'm gonna say is I was really proud of our student body, I was proud of our marching band, and I was proud of our football team and players who had to deal with a home crowd that had some chants and some vernaculars that we wouldn't appreciate here at Perqimen Valley. So I was proud of our student body, I was proud of our marching band, and I was proud of our football players. I sat dismayed at the 50-yard line, listening to what myself and people that I was sitting with who have kids on the team and the band and on the team were just dismayed of the lack of professionalism from another school district. That was my president's report that I wanted to give, to say I was really proud of our student body, our students, marching bands, football players, coaches alike, all the volunteers who held themselves in such high esteem. Obviously, social media was ablaze this past weekend. I attempted to learn from a mistake a couple weeks ago or a couple months ago when I came to a board meeting and offered a policy without telling the board. I offered a thought process to the board to what my thought processes would be today. I was perturbed to find out that that email was shared and put on social media, it kinda defeats the fact that I'm trying to communicate with board members in private, all blaren carbon copied, so we don't negate any sunshine laws about what's going on in my brain. I will say, just my personal opinion, and I will allow other board members to talk now if they would like to as well, I was disappointed to hear that we did not have a policy in place for a bathroom policy. We do have a policy in place for drugs, for fighting, we have vape detectors, we have policies for everything, and absent policy, we are directed to have a policy. What that policy is gonna look like is up to what this board wants to put together if they want to have a policy. I personally do, and I made my opinion very clear to the board what my thought process was. And some board members don't believe it's the job of a board member to dictate what the policy is or write a policy, and I respect that, I think that's perfectly fine. These are challenging times. I was dismayed, disgusted at a lot of the comments that were on social media. I just don't think we need to talk to each other like that. I don't know why we can't have adult-like conversations. I don't know why we have to share students' information on social media. I find it really strange. I don't know why we have to take a question and make it that worst reality. Why do we have to have a question of who has access to the bathrooms to, well, they could stab and murder and rape somebody? Why we have to take that and always assume the worst? We do have a difficult conversation that the board needs, in my opinion, that we need to address. Do we think it's accurate and fair that students should have access to any bathroom they want, depending on how they identify? Do we think that's appropriate? It's my personal opinion, I don't. I don't. And not because of bullying, and not because someone might get sexually assaulted or raped, because I just don't believe that should be. There are school districts in Pennsylvania that have biological sex policies, there are school districts across the country that have biological sex policies on locker rooms and on bathrooms. And it's not just the bathrooms I'm being told, it's locker rooms. The same thing's happening in our middle schools. Hearing this from students, not made up. I made my opinion to the board on what we should do, this is difficult, again, another difficult conversation. But where I draw the line is where we still continue to hear students, whether they're transgender, homosexual, straight, black, white, Indian, tall, fat, skinny, being bullied, that should not belong, but yet, you go on social media, sometimes you can understand why people are being bullied on both sides of the aisle. My, I ran for the board because I believe that our main job is education. The other stuff is the other, we're not a restaurant, we're not Taco Bell, this is not a public bathroom, this is not a public library, this is not a, this is a school of education, and that's my thought process. I gave to the board what I would do, and lack of that happening, I will be asking that the policy committee take it up. I don't think it should wait. That's my opinion, that's one person. I did not talk to any board member about this, I thought I would do what was best, I apologize that it was put online or sent to a former board member to put online. My objective is not to shun anybody in our school district, to ban anybody in our school district, or to make anyone feel embarrassed, but I have a personal opinion that our boys' room and girls' rooms, subsequent to state law, should be separated. Would any board members like to comment before I go to the superintendent's report? Yeah? Yeah.
So I absolutely agree with you in regards to there should be some sort of policy. I do think that that's something that is needed. And so I appreciate that that will be something, hopefully, that we can work out and move forward in coming weeks or, or through policy where, where that needs to be, where the public can comment and come out and speak. And I heard a lot of people referencing statistics, which I think is great. Again, we want to base things on facts. The only thing I didn't see reference, that I do want to reference just for the board as we go into the coming weeks and we're thinking of things, I would like to reference some legalities that we need to consider. Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of 1972 states that no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Zelli 2016 argues that gender stereotyping is a type of sex discrimination, and he references the case of G.G. versus Gloucester County School Board 2016. G.G. was known publicly as Gavin Grimm. He was allegedly being banned from using the boys' restroom, and the school board discriminated his violation under Title IX. The case resulted in the Fourth Circuit reversing the district court's decision, which originally agreed with not allowing Gavin Grimm to use the bathroom of the gender for which he identified. This was the first time that the United States Court maintained that Title IX protects the rights of transgender students using the bathroom of their gender identity, setting a legal foundation. There's a growing number of cases. One was in 2019, Doe versus Boyertown Area School District. Cisgender students argued that the school policy allowing transgender students to use the bathroom and locker rooms of the gender that they identified with violated their constitutional rights of bodily privacy, as well as Title IX and Pennsylvania tort law. The court did not agree and upheld the school district's policy stating it would be harmful to prevent transgender students from accessing the bathrooms or locker rooms used by others with their gender identity, and that failure to provide this access may actually exacerbate symptoms of gender dysphoria, leading to greater chances of associated risk factors such as suicide. All of that is fact. It is all in, in case law. And I just think that the board needs to consider that in the coming weeks as we think about some of the things that the audience members have said and the concerns that have come up. Thank you.
So I, well, first of all, it's, we, this is now, I think, at least year two or three where we continue to hear very difficult, harmful comments from students about the bullying in the schools. So I am 100% in agreement. We have policy. We have administrative regulations. We have rules and regulations to prove, stop this from happening. So I know some of us, I mean, many of us probably, are very frustrated with this, and I don't, that is my question to administration, why do we continue to hear about this across all spectrums of groups in our community? It's just not acceptable. And the drugs in the bathrooms is a very concerning issue that I'm being told of, about. So again, those are, those are big issues that I would like us to figure out how to put some teeth into stopping these issues. So that's the first thing. The second is, I'm hearing the statistics. My question is, how do we, how do you discern or know who's coming in a bathroom with ill intent or not? So for me, the question isn't, are transgender people going to commit a crime? But that there are, especially with, there are minors. Most of the bathrooms are made up of minors. So we're looking at minors and prepubescent, pubescent children, turn, you know, going through puberty. There's so much unknown up and down at that time of life. I, I am supportive of a policy that, that is males in male bathrooms and females in female bathrooms, and, and offering other options to students who feel that that doesn't work for them, and making sure, I mean, our administration and our school, in my experience, has done a, a really good job in trying to understand barriers that might give a, a student cause, you know, just cause them to struggle with an issue, and the administration will, will tackle that. But I don't, I don't believe that we need to flip that on its head and that we, for a very small minority of students, change the policy, well, make, create a, we need a policy, but change what's normative, which is boys in the boys' bathrooms, girls in the girls' bathrooms. I'm supportive of that. But I can, I really, we have to, as a district, look at the continued struggles of bullying time after time at some of these board meetings. It's just not okay.
Yeah. So for my entire life, I never believed that there was any confusion about males go into the boys' bathrooms and females go into the girls' bathrooms. We do have a policy that is expressed and made clear to the entire world that males go into the male bathrooms and girls go into the girl bathrooms. There are signs on every bathroom. And it doesn't say, the, the sign is for males, but you walk in and you might find a female. The sign is for females, you walk in and you might find a male. That is dishonest. I mean, it, it is not the policy, it has not been the policy. And who would have thought that we needed an actual board policy? I mean, I'm quoting, but I don't mean to quote. You know, this was running through my mind again and again and again. Who thought that we ever needed to tell people to use the bathroom of their sex, biological sex? And all males are welcome in the male bathroom, and all females, I'm sure, are welcome in the female bathroom. And there are individual bathrooms provided for those that, for whatever reason, do not feel comfortable using the co, using the multi-user bathrooms. You know, we, bullying is, is real and needs to be addressed, and we have addressed that through multiple policies. But this is not a targeted policy against any person or group of peoples. This is simply a policy to allow kids to grow up and be comfortable with their, with them maturing through their formative years. We, I've heard a lot of good comments on both sides, and it's not that there is any person, that anybody, I, I believe that, that there's no one, that anybody's worried about committing any kind of act, any kind of bad act, based on this policy, with or without this policy. It's, I agree that there could be abuses of this policy. You know, we all know that, and it, it's been alluded to, that any person, at any time, can identify as whatever they want and walk into whichever bathroom or whichever locker room they want. You know, whether they're wearing a dress, whether they have a wig or not. And those are the disingenuous people, and those people aren't here tonight, okay? But those are the disingenuous people that will abuse a policy that does not explicitly restrict the males to going into the males' bathroom and the females to going into the females' bathroom. We need a policy, apparently, immediately, a policy that we always thought was in place, and a policy, you know, for an administration that, quite frankly, betrayed most of the parents in the school district without, without consulting us. So the second thought that I had too, I don't know who else's brain works this way, was who did this? Who would do this? Who would place a 13-year-old boy and a 13-year-old girl in a bathroom or a locker room together? What kind of person would do that? Not me. And we need a policy to tell the school district that it will not be this school district either. So that's my opinion on this, and I believe that as soon as possible, we need a policy that clarifies who can use what bathroom.
Any other, any other board members want to comment?
I would say that I think this wasn't on the agenda, so I, I don't think it's really appropriate for us to be having these discussions, and I'm glad that you're going to be bringing it to policy committee because that's the appropriate place to discuss a policy, and I look forward to having a full discussion there, and I will have much to say at that time. Thank you.
We can add it to the agenda now if you want. Oh, no? Okay, just making sure. Anyone else?
Well, I'd like to add it to the agenda.
Are you making, you need to make a motion to, you have to make a motion to, you have to make a motion to amend the agenda, and then we're going to reopen, if it passes, we're going to reopen public comment.
I'm sorry, but if you're going to add an item that, to the agenda that was not included in the publicly posted agenda by 24 hours or more, you need to state a reason why the action item is, or the item's being...
You can do that in the motion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to create a policy that people with, like genitalia, use that restroom. So the motion probably needs to be cleaned up a little bit.
Would you like this?
I don't know.
Or no? This is what I sent out. I don't know if you read it. Would you like it or no? I, it's weird, you know? No? It's fine.
I'll make the motion. Well, could I have that? Mr. Subers, what, is there any basis for the reasoning that needs to be given with the motion?
The law isn't clear. It just indicates that there should be a reason which arose within the last 24 hours as to why it's being placed on the agenda at this point without prior notice, without prior publication.
Absolutely. I already gave that reason, but I'll give it again. I make a motion that we amend the agenda to include in, is it under education? Under government, governance, that we include discussion and we vote on policy, proposed policy, 720, use of restroom and locker room facilities. This use of restroom and locker room facilities would clarify the use of same-sex bathrooms and multi-user facilities and single, single-user facilities. And, and a reason, well, do I, I need to give a reason. The reason being that I had no idea that every girls' room that was for females in this school district is not strictly for females, but it is also strictly for every single man in this room to use and abuse. And I learned that within the last 24 hours, and I don't have access to the agenda, and I cannot change or amend it, and I am bringing this to the board on behalf of the parents in the school district.
That's you. Is it sufficient or no?
The law's not clear.
I don't think...
Why does require for the sufficiency of the reason? I, I would note that I had provided a two-page summary of the current law on this issue to the district administration, and that I would recommend that the board consider that information regarding the current status of the law.
Well, there's no voting tonight. It's a work session. It goes to the works, it goes to the business.
Well, I was understanding that this was a motion that would be made tonight.
Are you doing this tonight, or do you want to...
Well, it's, I said...
Run action today?
I said to amend the agenda right now.
Correct. But are you asking for action today?
I gave a reason to amend the agenda.
Well, listen, I mean, if you're amending the agenda for next week, the item will be posted 24 hours in advance of the meeting, and it's not an issue. So we don't need the reason. My understanding was that a motion was being made for a proposed action this evening. In that case, we would need to...
So you're just adding this to the agenda that it gets to next week?
Would it be going to a first reading then?
No. It would go to, if it passes, if your, your motion has to pass, A, reopen public comment, B, get down to 9.02. If that passes, then it would, we would vote on it next week and make that the law of the land.
So, and if I could clarify, the motion would be to place this item on next week's agenda rather than amending this week's agenda.
Yeah, but it still goes at 9.02.
That's fine for next week, for next week.
Yes, I, I talked about the proposed...
Yep.
...policy, and the motion would be to add it to next week's agenda. It's not on next week's agenda right now.
It is not. So is there a second? Are you still seconding that? Discussion. Dr. Kohler.
So I do think that this is something that we need to continue to discuss, and I would request that we not vote this through for next week, but that we take it to policy committee. That's been the way we've done things in the past. I think that's the best way to get the best input. I'd like input from administration, I'd like input from Mr. Subers, I'd like input from the community, and I think that rushing this through next week doesn't allow for that, and I would like to see this in policy committee first.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, you are not only skipping the step of policy committee, you want to skip the step of first reading and have us immediately go to second reading for next week? So we're completely throwing out the way we typically do policy? Is that correct understanding?
Is that me?
Yeah.
Well, no, I, I didn't, I didn't know that I was throwing anything away. I feel like I got thrown away. If we saw, as we heard, and again, I'm stealing, but if we saw naked people running down the hallway, and then we say, all right, I'm going to, I'm going to talk about a policy about naked people running down the hallway, because administration is encouraging that and thinks it's a good idea, you know, just to have naked people everywhere. And that, that we have to sit here, that we have to sit here, and I'm answering the question, but we have to sit here and wait and discuss whether that is appropriate or not. And the only thing that will address that is a board policy that we need to put in place. I am proceeding with this policy because it is absolutely needed at this time. And I would think everybody on this board, everybody, will vote for it, and there is no reason not to.
Any other discussion?
So just to be clear, we are bypassing our procedures because there is a small majority on this board that has decided to take us all hostage and not get input the way that we normally would. So we're going to shove through a policy.
Room, do me a favor. Hold on, Ms. Evans-Brockett. Please don't groan at Ms. Evans-Brockett, or that's not nice. Go ahead, Ms. Evans-Brockett.
I didn't need the interruption. I was handling it just fine. Thank you, Mr. Saylor. It is clear what the intent is. You are using your minimal majority to push through a policy that if we actually went through the procedures, our staff and administration would give you the reasons that it is the way it is, and we could come up with a policy that works for all students. But you're using this to shove through your politics, and that is what is happening.
Okay, so I definitely agree with everything that Ms. Evans-Brockett said. I caution this group, this board, for voting... group, this board, for voting this through without taking the proper channels and without really doing the research to make sure that this is a policy that supports every single student. And when I say every single student, I mean every single student. There are laws in place for a reason. The fact that you have not talked to administration or Mr. Subers to see what those laws are and what proceeding precedent has been set. I read from this book two examples, one of which is a neighboring school. You're asking for so much money in litigation when the people out there decide to sue us because their rights against Title IX are being discriminated on. So I just want to caution the board that by just going through with this and not taking the proper channels and doing your due diligence, you're bringing lawsuits on our district, which takes from our students, every single one of them.
Can you discriminate against religion?
This isn't about religion.
Just a question, you can't, correct? Is there cafeteria halal or kosher?
There are, there are options.
No, no, no. Oh, no, no, no. When you're kosher, there is no option. When you're halal, there is definitely no option. The entire facility is 100% clean.
Well, then maybe you need to bring it to policy for that too, and we can discuss it and see if there's any legal precedent. But I'm talking about what's on the table right now, the one that I've actually done research on, and I know what I'm talking about. You can read it for yourself.
Any other discussion? Dr., Ms. Mayers?
I look forward to hearing from, so administration apparently was sharing information from legal counsel. We haven't seen that, or I haven't seen that. We have a week to, nothing is precluding anybody from having any discussions, from administration sharing the legal resources that they have access to. So, and discussion can happen. We have a book policy that's been floundering around in policy for months on end, and we have yet to see any type of, not any, we have yet to see that come to fruition. So when I hear that there are middle school students apparently being, possibly being exposed to students of the opposite sex in the locker rooms, that's egregious and very concerning.
Any other discussion from the board?
Can I just make a point? I just wanted to, in defense of the administration, make sure it's clear that I just sent over that. Yes, I, I just wanted to make clear in defense of the administration that my summary of the case law, I just sent it over today because I only learned about this matter over the weekend, on Sunday, I believe. So it wasn't like the administration was sitting on this and not sharing this information with the board.
Any other discussion?
This is not, I'm sorry, is that okay, Mr. Saylor?
Of course.
This is not actually the appropriate time for discussion, but I want to make sure that administration weighs in on this. And I want to start with our mission, which is to cultivate inclusive school communities. I mean, that is what we are about. That means we want kids to want to come to school. We want kids to feel comfortable in school. We want students to feel supported in our schools. We work diligently for all students to feel that way. Clearly, we have some things to focus on when it comes to bullying. Extremely disheartening to hear about what some are experiencing, and I will follow up with our principals. In addition to our mission, which is what we are about and have been about for quite a few years now, we have Policy 103, which is nondiscrimination in Title IX. It calls out gender identification as a protected class. This is our policy right here. We also have federal legislation, Title IX. We have been supporting these students for years. I'm wondering, what's the problem we need to solve? Because we work it out. The unfortunate incident that happened over the weekend or last week is one that should have been addressed independently. It could have been resolved. It did not have to come to this social media, let's further divide the community and hurt more kids as opposed to support. Anybody who's struggling. Respected board members, anybody who is struggling in our schools, anybody, cis, trans, any of these other protected classes, our students, we make every effort to support. And until this incident, there was not a problem. I don't know what we're solving. There isn't a problem right now. We can work out what needs to be addressed. We can work it out. We have a policy that protects these students.
In all due respect...
And avoids us discriminating against them.
In all due respect, and I appreciate that, the answer from the administration was, your daughter is just gonna have to suck it up and go to a one-on-one bathroom.
And, and Mr. Saylor, we should follow up on that, because if that's somebody on my team, our team, I need to address that. That is certainly not...
No, no, come to order.
That is certainly not the typical approach taken by our principals, and, and I did have a conversation with our principals today. In each of their buildings, they have found ways to support these students, to support all students. They work tirelessly to do that, individual bathrooms or these other public bathrooms. It has not been an issue or a challenge. We can work through the issues that do exist for individuals who have spoken tonight. Not a problem. But if there's unprofessionalism on the part of our team, I will address that, and I will explore it. And to my knowledge, there has not been transgender students using locker rooms and changing. That came from our administration today. They are not aware of that. Bathrooms, yes. Locker rooms, not to our knowledge.
Any other discussion? Roll call? Sure. The, the motion is to add item 9.02 to the agenda for next week, which would have a discussion on Policy 720 and put that forth policy.
Dr. Campley?
No.
Mr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
No.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Dr. Kohler?
No.
Ms. White?
No.
Mrs. Mayers? Mr. Saylor?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. For this evening's report, I want to take us back to, again, our, our shared beliefs. We prepare our students for the future. We, we nurture supportive schools, and we build partnerships. This is all coming out of our comprehensive plan and the mission statement that I just referenced and that we read each board meeting. We make every effort to cultivate inclusive school communities so that our students want to be a part, feel a part, and a sense of belonging. So I want to talk a little bit about first day of school, and again, I need to, I need to work with our student reps a little bit. There's a little bit of overlap, so I'll move quickly, but some great pictures shared by our parents, and really, the week went great. It's amazing to me how in these recent years, it's as if they were never away. They get right back into the routine of things. Even busing wasn't so bad for us these first couple of days, and I'm very appreciative of the work that STA did. As a result of our conversations over the summer and through our auditing process, Mr. Gunesse was a huge help to that process. Things went really pretty smoothly, and students seemed to be happy to be back. Some more pictures. Dr. Parr will post these on the website. I hope if you had a child that started school last week, it was a positive experience for them, and I hope our student reps also had a positive start to the year. Good. Great. All right. So Director of Food Service, thank you, Ms. Gartner, for being here, and congratulations again on the position. We're very excited to begin to engage with you and talk about some of the foods that we serve our students and what we might do differently moving forward. Congratulations again. Some good news out of U.S. News and World Report. The high school rankings came out last week, and Perkyomen Valley ranks 45 out of over 600 school districts in the state, and seventh in the county of 21 school districts. So kudos to our high school. They seem to be the focus of this particular ranking system, and we're happy to see that they, they landed higher up in the rankings and appreciate the work that they do to land there. Let's talk a little bit about safety. That's been a topic of conversation, really in light of some recent events connected to athletics, and not necessarily on our properties or in our facilities, but in others nearby that we've learned about, and we learn from our neighboring districts. So as we prepare for our first home football game this Friday night, I will be sending out in my newsletter that all elementary and middle school students are to be accompanied by an adult. All PVHS students need to show their identification upon entrance, and there will continue to be no backpacks in the stadium, and you can't bring food or drink into the stadium. There will be enhanced security. We try to secure as many of those individuals as we can to support what's happening in the stadium. A couple of new ideas that we've been talking about, and you may have seen some of these in a preliminary message that went out on Monday morning, but not yet ready or final, is that we are thinking about moving our high school students to enter a gate. It would be Gate Three here, near the student section, D, actually, I'm sorry. This is the student section or the home side of the bleachers. We are thinking about routing all of our high school students to come in that gate and then hop right into the student section where they tend to sit or situate themselves. We will have security, as I've mentioned, and we will eventually have our own school police officers there once they are hired. Another thought that we have is about employing a metal detector wanding system in a randomized manner or for every individual that comes into the stadium. This is something that we've initiated conversation around, and I've talked to the board about. So know that these conversations are happening. We would most likely develop a policy and administrative regs before we would implement taking such a step or that sort of safety measure, but know that we're really thinking about what can we do to be proactive and decrease the likelihood of an incident to the degree possible, to the greatest degree possible. And lastly, we are working on a video describing emergency response procedures in the stadium. Now that we have this big, beautiful scoreboard with visual capabilities, we'd like to share a video with individuals who attend and help them to know where the nearest exit is and what they should do in the event of emergency, and emergency, excuse me, and have to evacuate. So stay tuned for that. So the highlighted text in this report indicates new ideas. I'm going to actually wordsmith that a little bit before it's posted. These are new ideas around some of the safety measures we're talking about, again, in response to some of the things that are happening around us. Stay tuned. More to come on that topic. It is our highest priority. So what's happening in the district, very briefly, again, our student reps shared with you. Our meet-the-teacher nights are coming fast and furiously. High school, middle school, elementary school, Thursday, Thursday, Thursday. Board has a work session on the second. I am scheduling my first superintendent's roundtable. It'll be a morning meeting, coffee and conversation, October 4th. I'm going to try some mornings along with some evening times, just to see if that might work better for some parents or interested individuals, and then, of course, we have our business meeting in October. So for now, these are some of the important dates just to keep in mind as we quickly move forward. We mentioned the change to the PVU night event. Our football team and our football coaching squad has for several years now organized an autism awareness night or an opportunity for some of our special needs students, our neurodiverse students, to actually be a part of bringing the football team onto the field, so that they feel a part of a group that maybe they really admire or appreciate or respect. And this year, we inadvertently scheduled it on Rosh Hashanah. I regret that, and I sincerely apologize for the error to our community, and so in response, again, we're thinking about how do we avoid such an error in the future. We don't want to conflict with cultural celebrations or holidays on the part of individuals in our community as we know them. We don't want to miss any either. So for now, we've created a list of holidays that will be posted, along with our instructional calendar, on our website as almost a page two, just to help people to know, these are holidays that we've tended to celebrate or had school days off because of. So again, creating that awareness. There are other holidays that individuals in our community we know celebrate, don't necessarily come into play in the calendar, for example, Hanukkah. That may be a different list, but we are working hard to make sure we maintain an awareness and don't create conflicts for families in our community, particularly when it's an event that's intended to be really inclusive. So I really appreciate the football team's effort, Mr. Felty's efforts, and all that they do to really support these students. They're really the only team that does such or holds such an event, and I very much appreciate their willingness to change it to October 27th. When my newsletter goes out this week, that will be advertised, and it will also be advertised in Mr. Felty's moving forward, along with principals. So with that, that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Solicitor.
I have no report.
Any board members have any district committee reports? Non-looking. 3.01 is the consent agenda for business meetings. Items listed below are the standard routine visits of the board. For the consent agenda, board members may request any items for discussion. The consent items are listed below, and we'll move forward to education. Mrs. Mayers?
Thank you. Dr. Smith, you have the Education Committee of the whole. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We have a relatively short agenda this evening. There's just two items, so I'll go through them and allow for some board comment and then certainly public comment. The first one, our assessment updates. I will briefly share with you our assessment results from 2023, the spring, and then our draft assessment calendar for this coming school year. So I just included three or four screenshots for you that show the five-year historical performance of our students on the PSSAs as well as on the Keystone Exam. So this screen is our ELA performance. These are different students from year to year. We're just looking at each of the particular grade levels, and of course, you can see how they have changed over time. In ELA, you will notice in some grade levels, we saw an increase in student performance from previous years, and in other grades, you will notice that there was a decrease there. We still, again, this is very preliminary for us in that we have not had that opportunity to have the deep dive that we will have prior to January when we present our annual data presentation, and we break it out by subgroups and so forth. So for tonight's purposes, we're just sharing with you grade level. So these are the percentage of students performing proficient or advanced. I also then tried to tie any of that data to some of the goals or the recommendations that we had for you in the last January data presentation, as well as that were aligned with our comprehensive plan. So our comprehensive plan does have a goal along our ELD students, which, again, I didn't break out the subgroup data because we're still looking at that, but it is aligned to our ELA performance. And I tried to give you an update on those recommendations that in January of this past year we had provided to you. So we were recommending an increase in our staffing, which you thankfully board approved for us. We are continuing to look at investigating schedules to better support RLs, and we did complete the program audit. We are still in the process of developing that action plan, although we have accomplished several steps that needed a quick response from the audit, which I can share at a future point. In terms of math, you see a similar slide here with our percent proficient and advanced performance. On this slide, I think you will notice more growth. Most of the grade levels, you will notice have an increased percentage of students proficient or advanced, and it is that higher grade, that eighth grade, where we continue to see or struggle with some of our performance there. Math is also a goal in our comprehensive plan, specifically looking at our secondary math, and you can see on the recommendations over there, three areas that we have completed. You did receive and approve a new middle school math curriculum, new middle school math resources, and we did evaluate the effectiveness of Freckle and made a different recommendation for you for this school year as well. Ongoing work is still professional development, which will be a lot this year with our new resource of iReady, as well as what are just those good instructional practices. Our instructional coach and supervisor... Our instructional coach and supervisor are working on that, and we do continue to look for math interventions and what might a schedule changes look like at a secondary to assist us in being able to provide opportunities for students in areas of need, whether that's enrichment or intervention. In terms of science, you can see we have typically been a high performer in the area of science, and in all three, sorry, in both of the grades that are tested on the PSSA, you can see that we saw improvement overall from year to year. And then I showed you Keystone's here as well, and for the most part, are very pleased as well to see some growth there in each of the areas. So the next steps is obviously a lot further analysis. That's a very broad perspective that we just shared, so we'll be looking at those performance results. I know that Dr. Sacks is working with building level teams to look at that data. We also will disaggregate it by all of our student groups, which we typically present to you in January. Specifically, we'll be looking at English language learners and special education, as were two areas of our comprehensive plan, but of course, we'll break that down into each of the subgroups that we typically present, and then what are our learnings or our recommendations that may be coming out of that. Mrs. Mears, did you have a question?
I did. So in January, will we also, will you also be comparing maybe some districts around us' scores? Is that something that also will be?
Sure. As soon as we have that, we will share it. Usually, it takes a couple months till we get that information. The state comparisons are not out, nor are our school district comparisons, but as soon as they are public, we will share them, even if that's in advance of January.
Thank you.
Good question. So then that rolls right into our assessment schedule. This is something that annually the school board approves. These are the tools that the district has approved in the past and purchased as universal screeners for our students. So they are in addition. You'll certainly see the PSSAs and Keystone's on this particular schedule. However, you will see other tools that we use periodically throughout the year, depending upon the grade level and the subject, to help us determine whether that be grade level patterns. It can impact curriculum, as well as getting down to groups of students and individual students, particularly through that MTSS process, and which students might, again, need an intervention or enrichment. So you'll see most universal screeners are administered three times per year, so that you have a beginning, a middle, and an end of your checkpoint. Some of them are two. You will see diagnostic assessments on here, things like the STAR that you've recently approved in the elementary. You will also see on here Linkit, which is more of a grade level benchmark, assessing grade level standards, where diagnostics really adjust themselves beyond that grade level content if necessary. So the elementary schedule is here for your review, and then you will see the secondary schedule. Both are linked in board docs and are an action item for this month. Secondary one looks a little bit more on it, and that is simply because in the high school, there are different assessments based upon the subjects. So you'll also see the biology and some of the other areas on here, as well as PSATs, SATs, so forth. Are there any questions from the board on any of the assessment data or the schedule? Okay. Then I'll roll into an exciting topic is full-day kindergarten. Last month, we gave you a bit of an update on the progress we've made. I want to give you a little bit more information this evening, as we then hope to pull it all together for you in October. So again, our goal is to investigate the logistics and programming of a full-day kindergarten program with a targeted recommendation next month in October. If we recommend to move forward with Full Day K, and if the board should approve that, the target would be to implement in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. So on the right is our action plan, and I've slowly been trying to highlight in green those that are completed steps, and I will report to you on a couple of them tonight. Last month, I did talk about staffing in terms of teachers and indicated that we are not projecting the need for any increased staffing in terms of teachers, nor are we projecting for administrators. However, in talking with principals, we would be projecting an increase in one paraprofessional per building, specifically to focus and support additionally in the kindergarten, and you can see that cost that is associated there. And cafeteria monitors is still under question, as the principals are working on what is that lunch schedule going to look like, the logistics of that, and where will those kindergarten students, and when will they eat? That may drive out cafeteria monitors. I will know that by next month. So right now, you can see in terms of staffing, a projection of around $240,000. We also then, I met with Dr. Boyd and Dr. Gibbons to talk about special education, and currently, our students that are, have the greatest need as kindergarten students that are coming into our district programs, like an autistic support program, they are already in a Full Day K program. They stay the full day with us. So based upon that, we are not projecting an increased cost due to special education. Certainly, early intervention or EI, you hear that every year. Those numbers ebb and flow, and depending upon the needs of those students, we may have increased costs, but that wouldn't be because of Full Day K. It might just be because of the needs of that particular student, as we see on any typical year. So right now, we're not projecting any additional cost due to special education. In terms of transportation, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Fabrizio, and Mr. Ganesh and I also met and worked with STA. We project a savings due to diesel cost fuels that we would save by eliminating the midday run, and you can see the calculations up there from the data from STA on how many miles we spend on the midday run, at the cost that we are paying through MCIUs costs per gallon this year, and then we've projected a three percent increase in that diesel fuel cost. So we're anticipating close to a $12,000 savings by eliminating the midday run. However, we would be projecting that if the class is around three hundred students, about half of them would now need to be added, or a hundred and fifty to the AM and the PM bus runs. That's really hard to predict. It's going to depend upon their residence and exactly where they live, but we, it could be anywhere from two to four buses, dependent upon, again, where those kindergarten students may reside. And again, you can see the calculations there, projecting a per, a projected bus cost range of anywhere from 118 to 236,000. However, with Mr. Ganesh's support and working with our transportation department, we've really seen some efficiencies this year, and we've reduced the number of buses. So in the end, we may actually have in our budget more buses than we would need, even with having to add these two to four. So we'll flush that out a little bit more again before next month, but you can see if we have these projected costs, it would be anywhere from a hundred and six to two twenty-five for transportation. So upcoming action items that will be completed in the next month, we will be holding meetings with each of the elementary staffs in the next week, where I'll talk to them about what some of our plans are, make sure they're updated on what's been shared publicly, and offer an opportunity for any questions, concerns, or to garner what is their support for moving forward. We'll finalize some transportation, and then we do need to project some calculations for the furniture that would need to be purchased for those particular rooms, as well as what curricular needs we may have, and we would like to be able to revisit the draft program and schedule that we had prepared a couple of years ago as well. So if you put together so far what we have done, you can see that right now, I'm projecting anywhere between 350,000 to 400, and around 70,000 could be the projected cost of implementing Full Day K. Again, that transportation is a big piece if that comes off, because we think we've got that in the budget already. That's a significant portion. So more to come next month, but we are well on our way to accomplish each of the action steps towards Full Day K. There's no board agenda item for this, but any questions from the board? Mr. Thor?
Dr. Smith, we looked at this a couple of years ago, and space was the issue. Do we have the space? Has that been alleviated in this go-around? If so, how so?
Yes, it has. And Dr. Russell, if you would, if you stop presenting, I have that slide in, in the presentation. I just hit it for presenting. Last month, we had shared that I did meet with each of the, I think it's down one, each of the building principals, and we looked at what the projections in enrollment would be, and because of declining enrollment, we actually, at this point, believe we can have Full Day K in our existing buildings in a K to five structure and make do, fit that into our existing buildings. We would be at about the same capacity, if you want to say, as we are now in terms of, for example, one building has wellness on a cart now. We would need to continue to do that, but we're not anticipating any big changes that we are, we are out of space. Any other questions on kindergarten? Okay. Is there any public comment on any of the topics of assessment or Full Day K? All right. Thank you very mu, oh, sorry.
All right. I just thought of one quick question. I'm assuming you did this, but considering what happened with the Unite PV Night, did you cross-reference the assessment calendar with those, with different holidays? I know one of the concerns was that sometimes there are students who their assessments are falling on particular days. I know that came up, so I just, I didn't know.
We can double-check that. I can talk with Dr. Sacks and double-check that. What I would say is most of what's on the assessment calendar are windows of time, like it's going to occur in the month of September, not on a specific day. So we can certainly make accommodations for students who may be celebrating or recognizing a holiday, but we'll certainly take a look at that to a further depth. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work on full-day kindergarten, Dr. Smith. Appreciate that. Four point oh two will be a motion to approve the assessment schedule. Any questions? Comments? Four point oh three will be a motion to approve allocations for the federal program funding. Any questions or comments? Four point oh, sorry. Oh, yes. My apologies. So if there are no questions or comments, they go to consent. Four point oh four will be a motion to approve the proposed allocations for the Ready to Learn grant. Any questions or comments? We can move that to consent, and the enrollment report is there for us to review. And that ends my section. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Business, Mr. Felton?
Good evening, everybody. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you and welcome to Kelsey Gartner. As many of you do know that Mrs. Hurd and I have been coming, been wearing multiple hats, Amy's been really carrying the ball a lot for food service, and I woke up sometime in the middle of July, and I said I had a horrible nightmare. I got up at three thirty. I said, we ordered all the food, and then we forgot to order the chicken patties. Fast forward, and Amy said I was nuts. Fast forward four weeks later, when she placed the first order, and she came in and she said I was all worried in the morning, and I was up at four thirty in the morning, and the order came, and guess what? They forgot the chicken patties. So I don't know if I'm a clairvoyant or some sort of idiot who thinks about these things at all times, so I just figured I'd just share that. So we're very thankful for Kelsey being here. So we'll hit it running. Carthick actually texted me and said, Jim, your jacket's off. So I'm very much relaxed tonight, so. Mr. Ganesh, if you would kindly come up, and you'll get us started here for the middle school computer lab replacement at Middle School East.
Good evening, everyone. So for your approval, next week is a request to upgrade the two computer labs in the middle schools. We have four computer labs between the two middle schools, and our plan is to upgrade two labs this school year and the two labs the next school year. A hundred and twenty machines in total, and these machines are about seven to eight years old, so they're nearing the end of the life. So these monies are budgeted with a twenty-three, twenty-four tech lease budget, and if any questions, I'll be happy to answer that. Thank you, Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Kirk. Thank you, Carthick. Just a point of reference, our standing operating procedure moving forward. Of course, Mrs. Hurd and I are looking at multiple lease options at this point in time, so we'll move forward with continuing to procure those. Hopefully, we'll have them by next Monday night so that we can have something to present to the school board. Of course, we'll continue to work with the Solicitor to finalize the lease terms moving forward. Just wanted the school board to know that. Any questions? Any questions from the community? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Moran is here for the human resources management software.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Good evening. And again, appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board. We have, as you may be aware, provided some updates over the past few months through Dr. Russell's weekly messages to the school board about the opportunity to look at our human resources management software. This has been an area that we've been focused on for the past year and a half to two years in reviewing our systems in the human resources department and how that impacts the work that we do in the entire district. Areas of focus, we really have been striving to ensure that as we go through the systems, that we're really looking at the end-user experience. And what I mean by that is the individuals that become our, you know, potential employees to our future employees from hire through separation. We want to ensure that their experience is a positive experience as they are going through the application process to become a member of Perkman Valley School District, through when they become an employee, and how we interact with their employees through our human resources software, up until the point where they decide to resign or retire, and how that process looks. So our focus has really been on that end-user, those individuals that we hope will become our employees. The other striving reason for going through this process has really been to ensure that we leverage our systems and ensure that we integrate the multiple systems that we're currently utilizing for human resources and the business office, and how do we leverage those systems to ensure that we're able to automate it so it's effective and efficient as much as possible. Third, we have leveraged resources, and a big piece of that is really looking at our human resources, not human resources department, but our human resources throughout the district, and how do we leverage the individuals that are tasked with a lot of our information and data entry from, again, from the recruitment process all the way through onboarding an employee. And more importantly, or most importantly, I would say, is compliance and security of data. We want to ensure that we are being compliant with all the state, local, and federal regulations, and things such as, you know, clearances, ensuring that our individuals within our district, that their clearances are up to date, their certifications or licensures are up to date, and how do we ensure that we're tracking that information and communicating that with our staff, to ensure that we're being compliant with all the mandates that we must follow from the state level and also federal level. And security of data is an area that we need to ensure that we're focused on. We have a lot of personal information that is stored in human resources in the business office, and ensuring that that information is secure at all times, whether it's our district hosting it or if it's hosted in the cloud. What I'd like to do is just run through what it looks like from our recruitment through individuals being paid as they become employees. The reason for this slide is really to communicate the different types of systems that we're using as a district. Again, our focus is how do we leverage a system so that it's more efficient and more effective, rather than multiple systems and having that, those systems talk to each other and transfer data. Our recruitment, you can see I have a few different systems that we will reference, Power School being our main one. Power School is also run through eFinance, our main financial system. So you can see recruitment, that is housed through Power School, so we utilize that system from the recruitment process of all of our new employees, from them filling out the application to scheduling our interviews. All of that is through the system Power School. Once we decide that we have a recommended candidate and we go through the onboarding process, all of that is done manually. So right now, we have HR department that is communicating to our prospective employees, gathering all the required documents using DocuSign, a separate system from Power School. That information is gathered. It is then hand keyed or hand-entered into our eFinance system. So again, some of the, again, looking at how do we leverage our human resources to ensure that information is being accurately entered in a timely way. Position management, something that Mr. Weaver and I have been speaking about, I think, since my arrival, is how do we utilize a position management system, where each position in the district is assigned a number, and that's how we track our positions, rather than by employee name or the position name itself. So definitely something that currently is not being utilized, but something that we want to utilize in moving forward. Contract certifications, again, you can see that it has HR or paper next to it, again, because that is done manually. So all of our contracts that we issue to our employees, our professional staff and administrative staff, are done via paper or electronically sent to them. They sign it, they scan it, they send it back to us, and then we have to manually upload it into eFinance. So again, how do we leverage some of those systems to make them more automatic? Certifications, we're tracking that manually by spreadsheets right now. How do we determine when individuals' certifications or licensures may lapse? That information is hand-entered into eFinance, but again, we're utilizing basically paper processes and hand-entering information. Benefits right now, HR, we use Google Suite, manual upload, all that information regarding the types of benefits that our employees are taking, changes to their benefits along the way, open enrollment process, all of that is done manually at this point. Substitute management system, we have three different systems that we're leveraging right now. All of those systems have to talk to one another to ensure when we have somebody who is going to be absent, that we record that information correctly. It then is applied to their personal time off appropriately, and then also that we fill it with a substitute. So three systems that we're working on right now to talk to one another, to ensure that we have those absences filled. Substitute management for our support staff, that is all done manually by an individual that has to send out communication manually to our substitutes. That has to send out communication manually to our substitutes, receive information from those substitutes, and then indicate that that person is taking it. So very labor intensive. Time, when we talk about time and attendance, all of our hourly employees, they are currently utilizing paper time sheets, filling out paper time sheets, submitting those time sheets. Those time sheets then have to be entered into a spreadsheet. That spreadsheet is then uploaded into eFinance. I think you get the drift. There's a lot of manual labor involved in these processes. Our goal, as we started this process, is really how do we leverage a system to record time in and time out, where people are punching in or scanning their ID cards to do that? Again, trying to decrease the amount of errors that could occur. Extra duty right now, again, is a manual process. Individuals that my coach or do ticket takers or time clocks is all done manually, not leveraging a system at this point. Extended leave, someone goes on FMLA, we're collecting that information. We are using a spreadsheet to ensure that we're meeting all of the deadlines for when somebody leaves or comes back. We'd like to be able to utilize an HR system that helps us to monitor that. And then performance and learning is more about evaluations. So performance, we are using a separate system right now, frontline, as well as professional learning. That's also in frontline. That will be for another day that we need to investigate. How do we leverage the best system that makes sense for our users? And then payroll, right now, we're using Power School, which is eFinance. So you can see multiple systems being utilized. When we look at the cost of these different systems, you can see the total there. It is estimated, this is for this school year. We do have two systems right now that we used last year's rates because we don't have this year's rates currently. So you can see approximately $64,002 is being utilized for the systems that we have in place. Beginning in the spring, Mr. Ganesh, myself, Mr. Weaver, we started to look at different systems. And how do we find a system that is more comprehensive? So we can, so that we can take the multiple systems that we're using right now and replace it with one or potentially two, again, to streamline that system. We initially vetted 12 different systems. We've narrowed it down after our initial vet, vetting process to five systems to bring to an initial committee. That committee reviewed these five systems through a demonstration process. And from there, the committee identified two individuals or two vendors that we were most interested in, Skyward and UKG being those different systems. Both systems have different advantages. Skyward, you can see the, the cost of implementing a system like Skyward. Skyward is similar to Power School in that it could do everything from recruitment all the way to the separation of an employment, including the financial system. You can see an initial investment, what that would cost the district if we were to implement something like that. And then, once it is implementing, implemented, you can see that the bulk of the cost is going to be on the implementation process. And then you have an annual recurring fee of approximately $36,000. You have a 4% increase each year when you look at year two and year three. And 4% could go longevity for each of the years that we kept that system. One difference in this system is that it does not include, at least the cost right now, does not include the implementation cost of time clocks. Definitely an essential part. So as we gather that information, that'll be something that we present when we determine which one we're moving forward with. The other company that we looked at is UKG, very strong contender as well. Difference between UKG and Skyward is UKG does not include the financial piece of it. So it would be everything from recruitment through paying our employees for payroll. However, it does not include anything with the financial side. So the budget process, requisitions, purchase orders. That would have to either remain in eFinance or we would look at a different system. So really tried to look at systems that are comprehensive, like Skyward, and then also systems that are very driven by human resources that really look at the end users in mind as it was developed. So those are two different systems. You can see two different fee structures. UKG, one of the biggest things I think that you would note is the initial investment is less than Skyward. However, the recurring fees or the annual cost for that system is much more extensive than Skyward. Our next steps as a, I would say, as departments is to further look at, with the board support, would be to further look at both Skyward and UKG from the human resources department, the business office, as well as the technology department, to identify which of those companies, if not both, do we feel that we could leverage the best as we move forward? So still more information for us to determine. However, we want to present to the board where we were in our review process and the costs that could be associated with it. We would be looking at implementation of July 1st if we're able to move forward. And then this, the cost would become part of our budget process for next school year.
Questions from the board?
And so I apologize, I didn't share this question. I just thought of it. So if you want to address it next week, that's fine too. I'm just wondering, did you, are there other systems out there? Why just these two? Did we look at other districts around and talk to them and actually ask them, you know, what's working for you? What's not? Just more understanding how you landed on these two systems just because of the, of the cost? I'm just curious to know.
Sure. It's a great question. Initial discussion was around what are other districts within Montgomery County using as far as their HR systems? Most districts don't have an HR system that is employee record based. Those that do, some individuals or individual districts do use Skyward. So originally, we looked at what are some of the systems that are comprehensive? So from recruitment all the way through the financial piece. There weren't many. Power School is one of them. Skyward is another. So those were the two that we really started to focus in on in our review process. Our school for a demo, as they are, you know, our current provider. But they were not selected to move forward in the process when we reviewed all five. UKG, when Mr. Ganesh, myself, started the vetting process, we did look for, you know, some companies that were out of the box. Companies that are not historically in the, the sector right now, at least in this area, however, do cater towards public schools. So UKG was one that stood out from our initial review. And then when we brought them in, you could really see that they were built from the employee perspective, more of a human resources. And that's why they only focus on from recruitment through paying employees payroll and they stopped there. Any additional questions or comments?
Evie, what is the comparison between the numbers here and what we're currently spending? As far, I mean, because you've got multiple places that you're pulling it from. So how does it compare?
Yeah. So it's a great question. The current cost right now for the different systems that we're leveraging is $64,000 is the total right now for, for those systems. This doesn't include the manual labor that goes into a lot of the labor intensive, I would say, input of data. However, the cost for systems is $64,000. If we were to go to a new system, let's use Skyward if you went to the next slides. One more. Skyward, the annual cost is $36,210 in year two. There is upfront cost to implement the, the program. These are estimates based on their, the first proposal from the company. So when looking at this company, they're, they're saying it's going to cost approximately $170,000 to $180,000 to implement. Those are things that I know Mr. Ganesh, myself, and Mr. Weaver would work very closely with the companies to see how much we can streamline that cost. Once we do the initial implementation, which just with Power School and eFinance, very similar. There was an initial upfront cost for implementation, all the data transfer, the professional development that goes into it. You know, once that is completed, you're looking at a recurring fee of $36,210. I think one of the other differences to note, Skyward includes everything from recruitment through the financial piece. But in that is also the employee records, which we currently don't utilize or have. So if we stayed with Power School, we still would be implementing, or I would be recommending that we implement other components that have additional costs. Ms. White?
So the other components that, so there really would be three options. There's these two that you're proposing for new implementation. And then there's, the third choice would be to do what you've been doing, the way you've been doing it, and then supplementing it with some fashion of additional software for the components that are missing, presumably.
That could be a third choice or a third option. It's something that the committee, based on our review of the five, did not recommend Power School to move forward. And I would not recommend moving forward for Power School from an HR perspective.
So, but not cost driven, just specifically in terms of how it's, how it's utilized?
The usability of it.
Usability of it.
And also from a security aspect of it, that is definitely a concern of the district.
So I mean, and I'm assuming that with these, either of these other, you know, proposed options, there'll be gain efficiencies is the whole purpose of streamlining, gain deficiency. You talked about manpower. So what, what isn't happening that could be happening with the gain deficiencies? If you were to be able to utilize one of the new systems?
So I think a very simple example would be when we onboard an individual. So we, an individual, let me start from their application process. They fill out an application to become an employee. When we select them and state, yes, you are now they're going to be the employee, and we go through the onboarding process. All that information that they completed in the application process, we then have to transfer manually into eFinance, which then becomes their employee record. So we are manually entering that data. So I think that's one example as to where in a system like Skyward or UKG, individual completes an application, you select hire. All of that information that they have already entered now goes into the system automatically. So that's a very simple example. There are many other examples that I could give, you know, from the way that we are monitoring benefits to leave of absences, to using spreadsheets to track information that could be done automatically.
Understood. So, and I, and I hear, I'm seeing all of that. So that makes perfect sense to me because that's the way, there was maybe not another way or another tool to do so. I guess bluntly, my question is, the people that are doing, I don't know how many people are shouldering the burden of all of this manual work. What will be done instead?
So there are definitely areas within human resources such as wellness. You know, that's an area that is extremely important to our employees. That's an area that we would like to spend more time and focus on that. However, our time with a department of myself, one person in benefits, one person doing all the onboarding for all of our staff members, and then a part-time secretary, we're unable to get to other areas that we would like to focus on. And that's one example. I'm certain, you know, next week, if you would like, I could provide more information.
Well, I just, I mean, to me, I think that the investment of software to gain efficiency is worthwhile. I just am curious if, if something's so laborious and that's the bulk of that person's time, what else would they be doing if they're not doing the thing?
Yeah. Another good example is, you know, we have one individual that does all the onboarding. I would love that individual to spend time with actually transitioning individuals into their new positions. So meeting and greeting them, bringing them to the buildings, spending time so that they get acclimated to a building, checking in with those individuals 14 days in, 30 days in, to make sure that what they expected or the support that they need is actually happening. So how do you leverage and enhance our, our ability to work with our employees face to face and support them as they transition in or as they're separating from our district? You know, how do we gather that information from them as to what was working, what's not working? You know, a lot of that information takes time. And unfortunately, you know, we're not able maybe to, to spend as much time as we would like with that aspect of it because we have other important information to enter. Any comments from the community? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. And remember, the, the larger part of the financial package is what Amy and I deal with and all of the secretaries as well. So that's why it's a critical component as we move forward from a timeline perspective. If we are going to go with a complete change like Skyward, it will take significant investment of time to get those secretaries up to speed. UKG, on the other hand, it's mostly heavy on the HR side of things. So less training needs to be involved with specific people at that point in time. So that's all part of the conversation that we're having. All right, Mr. Fabrizio, time for a summer 2023 capital projects update. Just as a primer here, the board has been kept up to date on multiple projects that we've been doing throughout the summer. We're here to report on the majority of them. And so I'll let Mr. Fabrizio take over. We have some pictures to help facilitate the conversation.
Good evening, everyone. So we were quite busy this summer. I'll start off with the stadium paving is finally complete. The press box roof and fencing is now installed. And the lighting automation system is, is live. We're leveraging that pretty much every event we have in there. We can pre-schedule months on end. They turn on, they turn off, and no one has to use the breakers anymore. We've begun the FCS renovations. The room is now totally gutted. The new UNI-VET is installed and piped in. We have our flooring contractor coming out Thursday. All the appliances have been ordered. And we're going to start framing probably by the end of this week. The pool mechanical room, I don't know if anyone's ever been down there. This is it. This is where all the pumps are, the filters, and all the floor was epoxy coated. And about 800 pounds of sand added to the mix, so it's a nice new finish. Middle School West, the gas is actually turned on and running. We made it by the skin of our teeth to have hot water. The Board of Health was out today, school opened to check. So we passed. The picture on the left is part of a boiler. They're made in sections and stacked, like glued together. The one on the left is a disassembled one and the one on the right is about halfway there. The picture on the right is the new high efficient gas boiler, which is up and running. So Evergreen library flooring, they kind of did what we did in here, like a hybrid approach. We did the vinyl planking and carpeting. That's done. The Middle School East auditorium, we redid the wall coverings, the flooring, and we're working on the aisleway lighting now. At the high school here, we redid the auditorium. We have our lighting training tomorrow. New flooring, seating, lights, fresh coat of paint on the exterior. Skip back in Evergreen. We did a lot of spray foaming in some of the wings to combat the freezing temperatures. And our snow was actually coming through the gable vent, so we stopped that in its tracks. We're still fine tuning the systems, getting dehumidification online. We have a balancer coming out to optimize the flow rates to all the units. So hopefully, that'll be wrapped up in the next two weeks. Food service equipment installs, this was new to me. I'm not that familiar with all this equipment, but we managed to replace a lot of roll-up refrigerator doors where the kids can grab drinks, new combi ovens, they steam and cook food, new ice maker. And this is through several of the schools. High school tennis courts, we have pickleball courts now on the lower four. They were converted, so there's eight courts. And we patched all the cracks on all the courts and they're ready to go. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fabrizio. Joe and I would just absolutely like to thank the board for the, the effort and the understanding and the faith that we would get these things done. It was a little close, as Mr. Fabrizio said, but just another reason to wake up at 4:30 in the morning. But thank you for your support. And of course, you, you helped us approve with those taxpayer dollars, getting things done in our capital projects. So I really appreciate that. Okay. Part of the core of the LED scoreboard was the insistence upon the school board that we actually have some revenue generation as part of that. That was part of the sales pitch that we had when we put that in. This is an update as far as where we're at. Right now, we're in negotiations and we've exchanged paperwork with the Perkyum Valley Youth Soccer Organization from a sponsorship standpoint associated with a tiny line marker Pro X field painter system. We're working out a lot of the details behind the scenes, just wanted to let the school board know that. We have CM3 onboard for advertising on the LED scoreboard. It's a three-year commitment for $5,000 per year for $15,000. Again, they have the legal paperwork as well. St. Luke's also, they are, of course, one of our largest sponsors. St. Luke's also, they are, of course, one of our largest sponsors to begin with. We reached back out to them. They are interested in a multi-year process, again, for advertising, again, at that $5,000 mark. That helps to offset that cost. Remember, our goal was to get $15,000 to $20,000 a year in advertising on a consistent basis. We have had some other leads that we continue to work on. We've been rejected by some places, and that's okay. We understand in our current environment, where we live, and the businesses that we have that surround us, that support us in multiple different ways. Maybe they can't afford the $5,000 commitment, but they certainly support us in the advertising and the books and those types of things when we have plays, the programs, all that kind of stuff. So we're very thankful for that process. This is an update. Hopefully, we'll have the paperwork done, at least on a couple of these things, in the backend for Monday night. Again, if not, no harm, no foul. I just want the school board to know that we continue to work on these things. Fox Rothschild has been great. Dave Comer has been fantastic, setting us up with the proper documents, moving them forward. So it's money, time, well-spent, and we'll see a return on investment coming back. Any questions on that? This is a placeholder. Again, I hope I have the paperwork in hand. I just don't want the board to approve something that now somebody might doubt what's in some of the paperwork. Yes, Mr.?
Sponsor.
Excuse me?
How many sponsors are there?
Three. Three. Yep. There are three, two big ones on the side and one underneath. Any questions?
Three.
That's what we're looking for. Yep.
How many?
One. We have, we're waiting for the paperwork for St. Luke's. That'll be two. And that third one, we're continuing to work on. Okay. And again, that's a placeholder for next Monday night. Okay. We have an approval of a new booster group, the Art Boosters. All of their paperwork is in order, their bylaws are in order, and so we're recommending moving forward, approving them as they've submitted. This would join the list that we did last month. And again, it has to be an exception to Board Policy 915, because it just wasn't in time. Any questions on that? These two go together. Any questions from the community? All right. Thank you. One other thing, you do have Mr. Marory's report as of August 30th for the ESCO 5.0. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. In item 502 and 503, they were discussed. Any further discussion needed? Move to consent. 504 is a placeholder. 505 and 506 were both just discussed. Any additional discussion? Move to consent. 507 is consent. 508 and 509 are both the, for special education's contracts, cost of service, and approval of community education agreements. Any additional information on those? Move to consent. And 510 is no report for September.
Thank you very much. Payment of bills, Dr. Campley?
Yes. 601 and 602 will be discussed next week, and that ends my section.
Thank you very much. Professional personnel, Mr. Keenan?
Excuse me. 701 will go on consent unless there are any questions. We have a requested, request to take action on your 702. Motion to approve administrative personnel appointments. We have a motion to approve Kelsey, is it? With Beth Yaxton?
Just a motion to approve the administrative personnel?
Motion to approve the administrative personnel appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
All right. We've got 703, 704, 705.
Hold on one second. Ms. Gartner, congratulations. Welcome to Perkyum Valley. Mr. Keenan, I apologize.
No. Sorry, I jumped ahead. 703, 4, 5, and 6 are items for consent. If there's any discussion or questions on any of those? Don't want to rush. And 707, we have another request for action. We have a motion to ratify and, oh, sorry, just came up. My computer was lagging. Motion to accept resignations and retirements as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I mean, I have a question.
You have a question?
I have a question. Do we have to take action on this?
Yes, right now.
Okay.
Yep. Any other, any other discussions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Keenan. Support personnel, Dr. Kolar.
Section 801 and 802 are on consent. 803 is a request for action tonight, so I make a motion to approve the creation of personal care pair professional positions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
804, 805, and 806 are on consent. 807 and 808 are placeholders. That concludes the section.
Thank you very much. Governance, Ms. Evans-Brockett.
901 is a motion to choose and endorse candidates for 2024 PSBA officers. There's only one for each of the positions, so I think we can move that to consent.
Yep. 9.02 obviously will not be on consent. Comments from the audience? Yep.
Tim Jagger, Lower Frederick again. First, I would like to comment on you chastising the board.
There are no comments directed towards board members. You can just direct everything towards me.
Okay. First, I would like to comment on the chastising of the board for trying to push an agenda through. I sure hope that you chastise the original people that pushed the original agenda through and informed nobody about it. Second, I heard that this could have been discussed one-on-one and handled individually. That is a gross, gross ignorance to think that this is a one-on-one topic. Every parent in this district deserves to know this, not just me. Third, I've been hearing about all these statistics, this, that, and the other thing, and hatred on the LGBT community. Well, Google it the other way, because there are rapes, there are crimes on the straight community caused by transgenders in bathrooms in multiple states. Next, I'm hearing about different court proceedings that have happened in the past. Some of these are ridiculous court proceedings. I read about one with a kindergartner. You're learning ABCs, 1-2-3s, and you're being diagnosed with gender dysphoria? There is a huge problem with society, and I hope we take a step to help alleviate some of the issues going on in this society. Thank you.
Any other discussion? In the, all the way in the back with the hat?
My name is Andy Feig from Lower Frederick. First thing I'd like to do is congratulate the superintendent on the school performance. U.S. News, that's admirable. Thank you for a good job. I want to say something to the board. The, you know, what may seem simple as far as restroom policy, I don't think it's simple. Many people here want the best for their kids. We want our kids to be safe. We want our kids to be respected, and this is not something that should be taken too quickly. There was a lot of impassioned testimony from students about what they face. Many talked about bullying and being bullied, and even some of the fears that were expressed seemed to be about straight boys abusing this policy to enter restrooms. And I would urge the board not to proceed the way that it seemed like things are going to proceed tonight with a very hasty motion and decision about this. Mr. President, you started off by saying that this should be something that's brought before the policy committee, and then when Mr. Keenan was putting forth a resolution, you were only too happy to hand it over to say, is this what you want? It seems a little dishonest, honestly, to proceed that quickly. And while everybody on the board was nodding and saying that we agree bullying is a problem, the bullying must stop, it's my observation that proceeding too quickly without really thoughtful discourse here about what could seem like a very straightforward, boys with boy genitalia go in the men's room, girls with girl genitalia go in the women's room, or boys and girls, I guess, in school. You know, what impact does that have on other students? And I don't know what the answer is. I'm not advocating for one necessarily the other, but I am advocating for thoughtful, really thoughtful process in understanding this and having a policy in place that's not going to harm. In my personal viewpoint, forcing something through without thoughtfulness about it and how it might affect those who are least able to defend themselves, because they have the least agency of any group of students probably in the school, is a form of bullying in itself. So I urge you to please take this thoughtfully and think about a policy, rather than just putting something on the agenda next week and voting on it. It's only six days away. It's not even a week. This is Tuesday. You're talking about making a decision about this possibly on Monday? That's my, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich West, let's get back. As a point of reference, one of the young men in the back, I coached in midget football. Great kid. I think some of the points the transgender community has made are valid. No kid should be bullied. My father, I've said this before, was a decorated Marine from 1960. I played quarterback since I could walk. I was the kid going through the halls defending kids that got bullied. We're mixing in two things, if I may. Bullying is wrong, period. The bathroom issue is a separate issue. It is my distinct hope, and I ran a business for 32 years, which I sold last year, I can tell when there's a legal issue pending or thinking about pending. I hope that through Title IX and 103, neither of which I'm qualified to discuss, that we can come to a decision where everybody feels comfortable and that this board does not get sued. I personally have a conviction as a Catholic, which I'll keep out, but you can imagine what that means. There's five people that feel one way, and there's four people that feel another way. Probably, no one's mind is going to get changed. I've sat through six of these things. But you cannot have a kid coming to school who will always feel uncomfortable going to the bathroom. There has to be a solve where everybody feels that they can come to school and feel comfortable. For the record, clearly, boys to boys, girls to girls rooms, but please make sure that all kids feel inclusive. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Hall, and I live in Collegeville. I have two seniors, and thanks. And I just want to say, first of all, trans women are women. Trans men are men. We have to work on educating everyone, the parents and the children. So much fear results from a lack of education. So we have to talk more, we have to communicate better, we have to take time to make thoughtful decisions. Pushing something through just because of your own personal beliefs and not taking into account the beliefs of others in your community, including the students themselves, who, by the way, my kids asked me not to speak today because they're putting something together that they want to present to you all. If you do, if you push this through too fast, they're not going to have a chance to voice their needs, and they're the ones that we're doing this for, is it not? So let's take some time and do it right. Thank you.
That's up to you guys. That's family matter right there. Aspen, you can go next, and then in the blue, Sam, right? You can go after Aspen.
I find it really disheartening, the lack of understanding that people seem to have between the difference of biological sex and gender. They are not one in the same. And when you have such a small group of a board making decisions for the welfare of all the children in our district, I implore you to get educated, hold a workshop, something, make it mandatory for the people in charge of these decisions, so that they are well-educated before making any decisions that impact the welfare of our children. Thank you.
Aspen Bradley, I actually didn't say this earlier, but I am a senior this year, so that's something special. But so, starting this off, I actually had a different statement that I was going to read today, but a lot of you guys saw it on Facebook without my consent and doxed me, so I'm not going to read that today, because you can probably find it anyway. Anyways, another thing, this is going to be a mismatch of different thoughts that I had throughout the meeting. A definition of a word that I'm not going to throw around right now is the action or state of setting someone or something apart from others. You can look up what that means, but that is what's being suggested today. More things that are being kicked around are the fact that... Let me get through my thoughts for a second, sorry. So first off, I also am the only person on the, like, committee of the GSA that's present in the room today, because unfortunately, our president had a family matter, but I think that if you are making a decision as a board that impacts LGBT, specifically trans students, which I also identify as, I am non-binary, which falls under the transgender umbrella, depending on the individual, talk to someone like me. Talk to someone like the GSA. Talk to an organization like that, because those are the people you are impacting the most with these decisions. And otherwise, that's just plain ignorance and borderline abuse, because you're going into something without actually consulting the people who you are hurting. You are blindly hurting children if you do not talk to them. Also, I would like to thank Dr. Russell specifically for reaching out and showing her support today of the transgender community, because that's very important and very validating. I was on Facebook briefly, and a lot of people are celebrating that. Thank you very much. But other than that, I have six different articles. I have a 70-something-page study, like I said. If you want to talk to me after this meeting, I'm not going to fight, I promise. I can exchange articles with people. I want to have a discussion with people. If you want to know where I got my articles from, I have them right here. I have all the sources. I'd like to have your sources too, just so we can get on the same basis. I want to have a civilized conversation. I want to know where you are coming from, because you clearly are not knowing where I'm coming from. Thank you very much.
My name is Samuel Lucas Esken. I am now a sophomore in high school. I live in Trap. I would just like to say thank you to anybody on the board that has, you know, support, you know, our queer students and our trans students, more specifically. I myself am not trans, but I have a lot of friends who are, and I would like to support them as much as possible. But I just have to say, you are forcing your beliefs onto us because of your bias that you had grown up with, and that is not fair to us as students. I am a student within this district, okay, and I have to go to school daily. You want to hear what it's like? Listen to me. You're listening to parents and other accounts of what's happening. I have a firsthand experience of what goes on in these hallways daily, what I face and what other queer people face. You need to listen to us as students and ask our opinions, okay? I shouldn't have to come to a meeting and tell you how I feel, okay? You should be asking us, what do you as a student need within this district? Okay? I have needs and wants that should be met, because I go to this school like every other student and deserve to be treated equally. The amount of times that I am in the hallways and I get called names and I am bullied, I am not even phased by it anymore, because I am used to that kind of treatment. Nobody, nobody should ever be used to that kind of treatment, ever. You would not like it if it happened to you at all. And you want to say, stop bullying? You, by forcing your beliefs on to us as students, that is bullying. You are bullying us as students, as people who do not have as strong or powerful voices as you. You are supposed to be giving us this platform to speak, okay? And I am choosing to take it, but so many other people are so afraid to, okay? I was only going to read to you what I had written very carefully. I was only going to read to you what I had written very carefully to present to you. But this is a serious matter that could affect so many people, and you do not realize the consequences your actions could be having, okay? The suicide rate of trans people is so high, you would not believe it, okay? For trans students, it is incredible. I know several trans people. I don't know a single one of them who hasn't at least contemplated killing themselves. There hasn't been a day that I haven't wished that I wasn't gay, okay? It would make my life so much easier if I wasn't. Okay, so I implore you, please, think about this more, okay? Put more thought into your decision, okay? Listen to your students, the people you are making this decision for, okay? Please. And also, this could, like many have said, have legal consequences to this. And I am not afraid to say that I will be taking those actions if I feel it is necessary. Thank you.
Claire Tremba, Trap Bureau. I had no intentions of speaking tonight, and I'm not actually going to speak on the bathroom issue because as a student representative, it is not my job to share my personal opinion. I'm here to represent the school and the best interests of the students. Continuing on that line of thought, I would say that the ensuing social media battles and the splitting divisions plaguing us right now are not in the best interest of the students. Regardless of your personal beliefs, the actions and the words that you use impact those around you. Standing in this room today and reading comments on social media, I have heard vile and disgusting words that are unbecoming of our community. I encourage everyone to, moving forward, consider their thoughts and their actions and put kindness first, please.
Hi, Terry Mulville, Collegeville Borough, again. I just want to echo some of the comments that were made just now by several of the other speakers. There really needs to be a thoughtful plan to this policy. Any organization, company that any of us work for, things just aren't thrown out there, and then you're left to just go figure out how it's going to work. There needs to be a thought about that. What does this mean? What are the logistics? What are the, what's the infrastructure that's necessary to make this policy that is being discussed happen, regardless of what policy it is? Doesn't matter if it's about bathrooms or if it's whatever. But just trying to rush a policy through without really thought put to it about how it's going to impact other people, how it's going to actually work, that's not a plan. That's chaos, no matter what the subject is. So I ask this board to make sure that whatever policy is discussed and voted upon, that there's considerable thought given to it and that you do listen to the students that are here because they're the ones that are going to be impacted by it as well. Not just these students, all the students. You need to talk to all of them and get a collective agreement on what they are going to have to live with. And the other point that was made that I want to echo as well is that there is a difference between gender and sex. They are not the same thing. And I ask also, again, that you educate yourselves on what LGBTQ means because there's a lot of misinformation out there about it. I'm the parent, like I said, of a, of a trans son. So I've done my education and my research, and I'm asking you to do the same. You know, you're talking about boys in boys bathrooms, girls in girls bathrooms. We all want our kids to be safe. I'm with you on that. I really am. You know, but do you realize, do how many parents out here in the community know that you can have a transgender boy using a boys bathroom, okay? They identify as female, sorry, transgender female, who is biologically male, using a boys bathroom, and is attracted to males? Do you understand that? There's all different types of individuals. Sex and gender are not one in the same. And these children, my son is not going to rape your son or daughter, like I said earlier. And my child is not a sexual predator. And that's how this policy of trying to rush this thing through is coming across. And again, like I said earlier, you know, you're using safety as a disguise, as an excuse, to try and marginalize someone who's defenseless. Listen to the kids. Thank you.
I'm Chaz Cleland, Lower Frederick Township. First, I'd like to say how proud I am of our students and our former students who came here tonight to try to give you primary accounts of what's actually going on in our schools, and I hope you listen to them. I'm speaking tonight as a member of the Policy Committee. Luckily, I was able to copy and paste some of this statement from the last time the majority board members wanted to circumvent the Policy Committee to force outside policies on our district without committee work. Out of respect for the members of the Policy Committee, I'd like the board members to vote down any policy that has not been honestly developed and sent for first reading by the Policy Committee. It's not in our best interests as a district to bypass this process. As a reminder from the discussion of our security officer's policy, Mr. Miller pointed out we should not adopt more restrictive rules than the laws we follow. You agreed with that idea at the time. I hope you still do. I encourage all members of the board to represent the entire school district. Try to find compromises that work for everyone. Let's avoid the lawsuits that will inevitably come from trying to force restrictive policies on a district that doesn't need them, as Dr. Russell clearly explained. Let's avoid all that, not waste the money. Let's build policies together that unite our district and not divide us. Thanks.
Hello, I'm still max. I'm still a junior. How is this going to be enforced? Because like you can't just stop any feminine-looking dude from walking into a bathroom. And it's not like you can put a T on an ID card to identify someone as transgender. So how is this going to be enforced? How are you picking out which trans kids are going in a bathroom? Also, I feel like it's not, you can't just say, oh, boys go in boys bathrooms, girls go in girls bathrooms, because it's not that simple. And people are saying, oh, yeah, bullying's bad, but there's no link between bathrooms and bullying? There is. There's this, it's proven that when you bring things up like this for debate, more people get bullied. Also, talking about, like, trans kids raping or harassing other people, a UCLA study found that there's no connection. There's no connection between trans people using the bathrooms that they want and sexual assault or rape. And trans people are over four times more likely to be raped. I... If you're still sitting here being like, oh, well, I don't agree, you have to at some point look at all of the facts and see all of these studies showing I'm not a danger. If you're still here like, oh, well, boys are boys, girls are girls. It's 2023. And, you know, it's time to stop acting like you were raised because this is a different generation, and it's a different generation you're affecting. So this isn't just a suck-it-up. Also, non-gendered bathrooms, not just for trans kids. If you are cis and you're uncomfortable, you can use it. You don't have to force every trans kid to use these just because a couple of students who are cis are uncomfortable. So let's see what percentage of the cis kids actually care because if it's not that much, they can use the non-gendered bathrooms and be forced to take the extra time out of their day. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice, so... No, you already spoke twice, sorry. All right, comments from board members? Any board members have anything to offer? Seeing Dr. Russell.
Mr. Saylor, I just want to echo some of the comments that have been made tonight and hope that the board will think carefully about moving the policy through without having Policy Committee conversation. And just share, I had the opportunity to serve as an elementary principal back in 2005 in this district. And for the first time really in my life, in my experience, I met a transgender child, second grade, who was really struggling. And until I had that experience, it was very difficult to understand. I really wasn't familiar with that struggle on the part of young children. So I think the point that was made that we all need to be educated and continue the conversations is a critical point that came out of some of the public comment tonight. A Policy Committee forum affords us that without simply adopting the policy. So I would really encourage the board to think about the possibility of tabling that motion next week and taking it to Policy Committee where we can continue the conversation and maybe even develop a deeper understanding about what's happening for these students and how we can support them. Thank you.
10.03 is a notice of video recording. 10.04 is adjournment. Just to let everyone know, we had an executive session prior to the meeting for legal and, legal, and safety. Thank you.